All right, so we are ready to begin, I think. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And the first action on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We are very excited to have siblings doing the pledge for us today. We are doing a site visit virtually today at McClure. And so these siblings are from McClure. And I'm going to ask Principal Lee to introduce them.
Yes, absolutely. So tonight, we have joining us William Robinson and Grayson Robinson. William is a fifth grader here at McClure. And Grayson is a fourth grader here at McClure. And I like to think they love me so much. They were at Whitney with me as well. And now they're at McClure. Their mom, Ann Robinson, is also a teacher here. But Will has demonstrated some outstanding leadership recently and really earned his position here at McClure to be a leader, helping with the little kids on their playground side and at lunch and with safety patrol. So I thought this was another great opportunity for him to demonstrate his leadership. And he said, all by myself? And I said, well, let's have Grayson join you. And Grayson also is on patrol here at McClure. And just two natural leaders that get to lead us tonight.
Very nice. Welcome, Will and Grayson. We are very excited that you're here to lead us in the pledge. Mrs. Anderson is going to post the flag on the screen. And as soon as you see that, you are welcome to begin whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was perfect. I don't think we have had a pair of siblings do the pledge for us yet. So you were very, you were very much in harmony as you, as you recited that pledge. Thank you so much for being with us today. We do have a couple of board members attending this meeting as well. And so I'm going to give them an opportunity to say hello and thank you. And maybe they have a question or two, okay? Okay, Graciela, would you like to begin, please?
Sure. Hi, Will and Grayson. My name is Graciela. You guys did a really good job on the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you tell me what your favorite book is?
Um, my favorite book is probably Amulet.
That's mine, too.
Cool. That sounds like a good book. Thank you, guys, for being here. You guys did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graciela. Norm, would you like to thank the students?
Sure. Thanks for joining us today. My name is Norm Walker. I have a couple of questions for you. Can you tell me one thing you like to do at school and one thing you like to do when you're not at school?
I can give you two things I like to do at school. I like to do math and I like to play at recess with my friends. Something I do at home is mostly game a lot. Do a lot of gaming.
Okay, what's, what's one game that you like?
Minecraft.
Minecraft. I've heard of that. I haven't played it, so I might have to try that someday. Thanks.
So the one thing that I love to do at school is probably science because when I was back in second grade, we did this volcano thing and it really interested me a lot. So when we did it, I thought it was really cool. So probably my favorite is science.
Okay.
What we, what I usually do at home is probably join my brother in gaming.
Oh, you join your brother in games? Okay, who usually wins?
Me.
Uh, my brother.
Okay, well, the important thing is that you have fun playing it and that you're good sports. Okay. Well, thanks again for joining us today.
No problem.
Again, I want to thank you both for being here. And you clearly are leaders just from your presence and your ease in talking with adults that you have no clue who we are. And it's hard enough when you're doing it in person. It's even harder when you're doing it virtually. So thank you so much for being here. You are certainly representing McClure in an excellent fashion. And I know that Principal Lee is quite proud of both of you. So thank you all. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to. But we understand, hi, Mom. We understand if you have other things that you'd like to attend to or homework or after-school snack or something. Mom, did you want to weigh in on these two wonderful children that you have?
Oh, we're pretty proud. We're pretty proud of them. I was, I was honored that Jamie asked us or asked them to go ahead and participate in this. They were both a little nervous. I told them it would be fine, that they would do just wonderful. We won't be sticking around because Grayson is getting ready to head out to dance and William is helping Grandma this afternoon. So, oh. My dad and my husband are away. And so she needs some assistance at home with our dogs. So William will be in charge while Grayson is at dance. And we are also preparing for a virtual wedding this evening. Their uncles are getting married, so.
Oh, how fun.
But we were super excited to be here today. And we are glad we could participate.
Thank you for having us.
Congratulations on the wedding. And good luck in your dance class, Grayson.
Thank you.
And I'm sure, William, that your grandma will really appreciate your help this afternoon.
Well, we got like six dogs. So they're probably going to be in there like me while I'm gaming.
Um, I can relate. I had, I too have six dogs. Most of them are little. So they do take up a lot of space, even though they're little bitty dogs. Okay, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a great afternoon.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
That was very cute. Okay. Next on our agenda is the Yakima land acknowledgement. And today is Graciela's turn to read that acknowledgement.
Thank you, Martha. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral land of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kitata, Clickatad, and Yakima counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Um, I was saying that I do appreciate the, the land acknowledgement and the fact that board members share the responsibility for reading that at our meetings. Next on our agenda is the school presentation from McClure Elementary. Dr. Green, do you want to lead into this or just start out with Principal Lee?
Well, I would love to lead in, but I think it would actually be more appropriate if I were able to pass this to our executive director, who oversees our elementary schools, so Catherine Page. I would love for her to do the intro.
Sure.
Hello, President Rice and to our school board. I am absolutely honored today to introduce Principal Jamie Lee. She has, she is one of the hardest-working principals, I think, and has just done a fabulous job. And I talked to her, let's see, we talk quite a bit, don't we, Ms. Lee? She's just done amazing work. And I am thrilled to be able to have her present today. She is working so hard on their school improvement planning process. And you will get to see and hear that as well. So Jamie, thank you. And it's, and it's off to you now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kathy Page, for that introduction. And I appreciate all of the acknowledgement. I'm only as good as those that surround me, right? And so a little, while I'm getting everything set up, side note on, on Will. He has demonstrated his leadership skills recently, but he started with them at the beginning of the year by joining patrol and then actually had them revoked and had to earn back his leadership privileges. So when I asked him, his first response was actually, well, why not Faith, which is, which is my daughter? And I said, well, she doesn't just get to do everything. She has to earn it, too. And I think that you're ready. And he's like, okay, well, can Grayson go with me? So it was, it was very sweet. And I'm very proud of him and what he has, how he's grown, even just in the last few weeks. So there's a backstory on that. All right, I think as soon as I can get this to pop up there. All right. Are you seeing the presentation?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll go ahead and just, just jump in. I've asked my assistant principal, Mrs. Stephanie Casillas, to be here tonight. She's here in case I forget anything. So I might defer and say, Mrs. Casillas, do you want to jump in if I have forgotten anything? Because it's truly been quite a journey to develop a school improvement plan that we live and breathe every single day. So we'll get started. We are McClure Elementary, the home of the Mustang. We have a newer front part of our campus. So I don't know if anyone remembers, but there used to be a very beloved garden in the front of our building that just didn't quite make the top of all the lists to get cleaned up by our community partners. And every time we would have something lined up, it seemed something else fell through. And it became really an unsafe environment to our, our students and our staff when transients began, began living in our bushes. And so this is our beautiful new front. We have green grass out there and we can see from our parking lot to our windows. And I just feel really proud of this area now. And just hats off to our maintenance department who made it happen very quickly. I was panicking at the beginning of school when it was still all dirt, but it came through nicely. So there's a newer picture. And then to just go along with a lot of the kind of rebranding that we did, this is a newer mission for our school. We recreated our mission at the beginning of last year. And so our mission reads, "We intentionally teach mutual respect, create an equitable learning environment for all learners where ideas and mistakes are encouraged and valued." It was our goal to really encompass a growth mindset and have that visible in our mission. This is our instructional leadership team. And hats off to all the people listed here. Our school improvement plan would not be as thorough or as functional as it is today without all of these people involved. We really tried to encompass not only our class, our grade level teacher reps, but really an eye from every aspect that we could think of throughout our building. So you'll see our reading interventionist and our math interventionist and our NTSS interventionist and our RTI specialist, which are all relatively either newer staff or newer positions to our building. And so I really feel like we have a full McClure view on our school improvement plan. Thank you to this, this team. And, and of course, Dr. Onzing and Ms. Shelby Lockhart, they both join our ILT at various times. And we have received a lot of support from both of them as well as from our school improvement partnership with Carrie Sorensen through OSPI. So knowing the five goals and how they align to, or how they guide our school improvement plan, I did grab some pictures from around McClure. And so this is, is one hallway where the compass is displayed so that all of the YSD strategic plan goals are visible to students and staff and parents when parents get to see them. And I couldn't get back far enough in the hallway to get the whole caption of the picture, but it says, amazing things happen here at the top of that. One thing that we did last year to really make the strategic plan comprehensible and digestible for our staff is that we broke it down into growth targets. So we created a document, and I'm hoping that this is transferring over to you, that lists all of the, the goals in the strategic plan. But then it's, it lists out over the six years how McClure Elementary really needs to grow and in what area to be on track to meet the strategic plans by 2025, 2026 school year. And so I, I know it's probably a lot of information and really small to read. But just what we're using this for, so for example, looking at goal one, at least 19 out of every 20 children meet the criteria for kindergarten readiness. We have been looking at our WOG Kids data and we look, we set our baseline and then divided by the number of years. And this is how much McClure needs to grow each and every year. And so it's the same all the way down this document. So our instructional leadership team at the beginning of the year, when we were looking at how do our students need to grow, we, we use this document. And so we're still waiting on some proficiency scores for the state testing, since we weren't able to capture that last year. But each one of the goals is outlined here. The fifth goal of our round graduation was a little more difficult for us to have data on to calculate out all through the six years. But what we've done is made the graduation year visible for staff in our building. So looking at this year's kindergarteners and just talking about and knowing their graduation year is 2034. And the end of this year is 2022. So really, when you think about it, that's not very far away. I know it sounds like anything with the three here and in the 10s place seems far ahead. But just really being intentional and looking, our fifth graders graduated in 2029. And so that's all happening very soon. So just trying to keep in the forefront of our mind, when, when are our kids going to graduate? And I'd be happy to make a copy and share that with anybody who wants to dig deeper. It's kind of a, a large document. So how do we, how did we develop all of our goals in alignment to this, to the district strategic plan, but really make it comprehensible to McClure Elementary and the growth of our students? We, we used our demographic data, but there was a heavy focus on our WISF data and what our past trends had been and where, where, how were we growing students in the past? And being that McClure is in school improvement, what did those numbers mean and what did those look like? So you're going to hear a lot around that area. But we've also used other, other screeners more for our measurement processes. So some of the screeners that are coming up now or in math and ELA or our DIBELS benchmark, DIBELS progress monitoring, and, and those are being used to, to measure our student growth progress. We, for our behavioral data, we, we used attendance data also from WISF, but we are currently collecting discipline data. And so you'll be able to see some of that. And two of our goals in our school improvement plan are based on our CEE perception data. The Plan Do Study Act cycle really hits home for McClure. Shorten that to PDSA. And our, not our entire instructional leadership team, but a team of people, a subcommittee from that team really attended the Science of School Improvement last year and learned all about PDSA cycles and how to focus on an area of need and really fine-tune that and look at growth in that area. So that was really valuable to our instructional leadership team when the committee was able to take that back to them. These are the demographics that represent McClure. They were updated from last school year. And so we, we fit right in, I think, for where, for all the students that we are serving and our, our data. I, I feel like maybe this wasn't 100% accurate because we did add two autism classrooms to our building and our special education percentage did not move. So this may be the same as the 1920 demographics, but nonetheless, it still helped guide how we look at our desegregated data and our groups when making decisions for, for underperforming groups of students or higher-performing groups of students. The last time we took the Smarter Balance Assessment, we did have these proficiency rates, both in ELA and math. And this is really where, when we think, when we began to look at our school improvement plan and developing our school-wide goals, this is where we started. And Shelby Lockhart led a lot of this work with us this summer. But I think for teachers, really drilling it down to where, where do we need to work with our students in order to show student growth? And how does that transfer to K1, 2? Was very valuable for instructional leadership team. So we took these percentage rates and actually dug a little bit deeper. So starting with our ELA target trend data for McClure. And this document includes everybody. We were able to really hone in on when we think about McClure and what our students need across the boards in grade, in grade three, four, and five, and how to support that at the K1, 2 level. As an ILT, we chose to focus on analysis within and across text. That seemed to be an area that students struggled in. And if, I know this is a lot of data. So kind of breaking it down, the, the red area meant that most of our students were at a level one in this area. So they were below standard. If it's white, there weren't even enough students that attempted to answer the question to gather data. And then if it's yellow, students are making progress toward meeting the standard. So we started with, in third grade, over the years, as, as students being at a level one and being well below standard, moving to fourth grade, students didn't even attempt to answer it. And then we started making some progress about 2018, 2019. And by the time that our fifth graders, which would have been this group right here, so not even enough of them answered the question to, now they were at a level three or four and passing that, that standard. We really wanted to know what was happening and how can we capitalize that on that in grades K1, 2 to make an impact? In math, we looked at our target data and did the exact same thing. And so when we looked at each one of our grade levels, so starting up here, third, fourth, and fifth grade data as an ILT, and drilled this down even further into the targets, we chose as an ILT to focus on place value, understanding that place value for our third graders had been an area that all the way across was, and below proficiency. There's a little key at the top of this one. And the same in fourth grade. It's not always target seed, but they, the place value target does transfer down. And then the same with fifth grade being red all the way across in place value. So we really, and we have seen this in our other district assessments, that place value is a place that students seem to struggle. So we decided to focus all the way back in kindergarten, being that place value is really a foundational skills that's skill that students start developing even in pre-K. So when you see some of our school goals, you're going to see an intentional focus in growing kids in those areas. And that is based not just on this proficiency rate, but drilling it down to the target level. This is just another view at the same, at the same data. This comes directly from the Smarter, the Smarter Balance. Actually, it's called WCAS. So when scores from the SBA are reported to us, they, they look like this and you have to break it down even further. So really basic, the red triangles means that students were not at proficiency. The, the green check means that they, they were. And the yellow circle means that they were at or near proficiency. So this is just another way of looking at the same data that we had on the other sheet. Another piece of data that we use when creating our school improvement plan came from the WISF site, which is on, comes from the OSPI report card site. This, this snapshot that you're seeing is really meaningful to us because it demonstrates the threshold for school improvement. So this gray line that, that goes across is the line that determines if students are above, or not students, but if your, if your groups of students are above or below the proficiency mark when growing them similar to students in that category. So this is really how school improvement is measured. And so the ID threshold is at a 2.3. So specifically for McClure, you can see, when this snapshot was taken, our students with disabilities were really an underperforming group. And our English language learners are right on the ID threshold. So also really needing some intentional focus. This is an improvement because when we landed in, in school improvement, many of these categories, if not all, would have been under, underneath the 2.3 threshold. So the, it's actually a really neat system. This is the, the threshold measurement on, based on student growth percentile. So it goes from a one to a two. And students are placed in like cohorts. And this scale was created based on nine different areas. So I'm going to move and you'll see. These are the proficiency rates that that scaled score includes and measures. And then using the score before, the darker orange, the less growth, the darker blue, the more growth. And so when students were co-horted in their like groups using those nine different areas, this really becomes all about how are students growing compared to their peers? And not so much about are they meeting proficiency? And so looking at McClure's data, we have really two celebrations in two different categories. Our EL progress rate is that, was at a 60.7% and moving into blue. So that meant that we, we are growing our EL students faster than students in their like cohort. And so the more blue, really, the better. And so then our white students are growing in their math proficiency rate. And then if you begin to look at disparity groups, you'll see our students with disabilities are really underperforming in all areas and even including down in attendance. So when we start looking at our specific goals, they're really going to be based on our whole school with an intentional focus on students with disabilities. So just asking the question, even around attendance, why are these students not wanting to come to school regularly? And we, we, this data is really meaningful to us and actually very excited to see the next measurement and hoping for a lot more blue because we are, we're really being intentional. So when I talked about our intentional focus with the SBA data, looking at the targets that apply to three, four, and five and, and how we could move those all the way back to the kindergarten level, that also is, you'll see this in these proficiency rates. So not only were we underperforming the state in our SBA, we're not growing kids at an adequate rate relative to their peers. And this is 17, 2017 through 19 data. And so we did have some people ask, why are we using such old, old data? And the answer really is, this is what we were producing. This is how our students were performing and not a ton has changed since these assessments. And so just digging deeper and looking in, in our core and our activities, where are we focused in these intentional areas? So I put this slide in here again because I just wanted to focus on, that your attention on the regular attendance rate. And it was 83.5% for all students. And so at McClure, we're always hovering in the 80%. So if you looked at, or we looked at data that went back quite a few years and it's, it'll balance a little bit, like 81, 82, 83. So we really wanted to take this apart and look at how do we have to grow our students in this area to focus on getting to the 95% so that students are at school? This has also helped impact our behavior. Or, well, it's not a behavior goal. Our, you'll see our goal is really based on relationships, which we believe will increase positive student behavior. So this is really very current data from McClure. In fact, this was taken from this year's data. Last year, we didn't have a complete snapshot because students weren't in front of us as much. And so our discipline data looked, looked great. We might, I think we maybe had two referrals last year. So now that we have kids in front of us, really, really, where are we when we think about the, the tier one, tier two, tier three needs that students have? So we've had So we've had 22 classroom, or 22 referrals since school started and ended, and we collected the data on September 30th, so a little more than 30 days, 35 days. And those 22 referrals involved 14 students and those 14 students were from 10 different classrooms. We had already begun interventions for 12 of those students, so 12 of the 14 who'd received referrals were getting some sort of tier two intervention. One of those students had a behavior intervention plan, which actually comes through a special education referral. And then one student was placed on a watch list. And so this is 4% of our total student body, so that 4% tells us that our core tier one is strong enough to support our students and what we're doing in tier one should continue. So I, I haven't seen hard data, but I know the referrals that come across and the 14 students that we've been working with and the interventions that have been put into place for most of those students are working. And so that is a positive celebration. Some other students have creeped up as get, needing some interventions and I am just so proud of the team here at McClure that is able to design and provide those interventions. Attendance still continues to be a struggle, so we're at 38.2% satisfactory. When you, when we're looking at chronic absenteeism and 29% of our student body in moderate and then 40% in chronic. There were only 35 days of that school and it wasn't even 35 school days because we take out the weekend, so there wasn't a lot of data to push those percentages up, but we, we are seeing students stay home more and we're requiring students to stay home more, so this, this data is hard to collect. And so we'll continue to work on that, Mrs. Cassius and our team and I have already had some, what we call like pre-meetings to the family engagement meetings, so just really having conversations with parents and students on what behaviors can, or what barriers can we remove to improve attendance. And you'll see that in some of our activities described. So another piece of data that we chose to collect, and this is kind of blurry, is our CEE perceptual data. And so this data really was around a culture goal, so in our school improvement plan, we, we have a culture goal that focuses on staff and our goal is that we will actually decrease the gap in what people believe and what's called the I versus they gap, so people reporting that their peers or their colleagues are open to new ideas. And I think that that's, that's a huge shift for McClure when you think all the way back to our mission and building a growth mindset and really changing a lot of practices so that we can work on meeting all of our goals in our school improvement, and of course, the end goal is in our school improvement plan, and then the end goal is to get out of school improvement. And so we felt like looking at this data, we, if we could decrease the perception that colleagues are not open to new ideas, that we would really be hitting in the culture area and growing there. So you'll see that goal as well. So here they are, here are our school goals, so we have a literacy goal, and again, they're all based on growth. And so by May of 2023, 90% of our students in grades K five will demonstrate typical, above typical or well above typical growth in reading foundational skills. That's going to be measured by our fall DIBELS to spring DIBELS benchmark assessment, there is a measurement tool in there that will show student growth. We also have a target goal, so that comes from that WISF data that I was talking about and you'll see even in parentheses, it says get in the blue, so it says, we will increase our student growth and that should be a P, I apologize, percentile from 44 to 60, our goal is to get into the blue, not the orange. And we will increase our student growth percentile from 27 to 60 for students with disabilities. So there's our intentional focus in, in the group. By 2024, as measured by daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, with specific focus on analysis within and across text. And so the analysis within and across text is drilling that down to the target trend data in the SBA and where we needed to focus to move students in that area. And a lot of the other targets are contingent upon students being able to analyze within the text and across text, so we are working on that, starting in kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. Really shifting our mindset that that's not just a three, four, or five focus. And teachers are embracing this, we are seeing rubrics developed by our kindergarten teachers and it's really fun to see, although we don't have a a way to measure the student growth percentile until we're able to take the, the SBA, so we're using rubrics in the meantime. Our math focus is to increase our student growth percentile from 45 to 60, to get into the blue and increase our student growth percentile for students with disabilities from 43 to 60 by 2024. We also chose to focus on three-year goals. Instead of just one-year goals, we are, of course, are measuring these goals quarterly, weekly, monthly here at McClure, but really wanting to give staff time to grow in their understanding of how to support best practices with our students so that we can meet their needs. So we will measure these goals every year, but our, the final end goal is by 2024. We have an attendance goal to, that matches where we want to be in 2026, so we will increase our regular attendance from 83% to 95%, and the math is that that is 2.4% each year. And we will increase regular attendance for students with disabilities from 78 to 95% and that'll be measured daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and by semester using attendance data. Oops, and then our social emotional learning goal, we really have two, and one of those is that every student in McClure will be able to answer the question that there's at least one adult in the school that they can talk to if they have a problem. And we're at 81% and we want to increase that to 14%. And then we have our staff focus goal that didn't make it onto this page, and so I'll, I'll go over that one in our school improvement plan. These are all student-based right here and through our weekly inquiry cycle meetings, we're talking about these and measuring and watching student growth happen. So what does that mean for us? So our theme for the, this year at McClure is growing greatness, that's what we are doing. And it, this board is so tiny, you can't see, because again, they couldn't stand far enough back in the hallway, that each blade of grass has a student name on it, each flower petal has a staff name on it and even the rays of sunshine have staff names on it. So if you get to visit McClure, I encourage you to stop by our growing greatness on bulletin board because that's truly our entire school improvement plan, it's about growing our students and stuff. So with that being our focus, we'll look at our school improvement plan really briefly, it's again, a lot of information, but how are we doing that? How are we planning on meeting all of those goals? We have shifted to weekly inquiry cycle meetings, so we have a cycle of inquiry that teachers are using to plan when they meet with our IF and Mrs. Cassius and myself weekly. And they put on their what data they're going to bring and what conversations we're going to have around math, ELA and ELAs broken into foundational skills and either writing or comprehension. Attendance is on there, interventions is on there, science. And I don't know if I'm missing one, Mrs. Cassius. But for example, this week, our reading intervention and ELL interventionists will join those meetings and the conversation will center around school and, school or student growth in our reading intervention program and students that are ready to exit reading intervention or students that need to enter the program. So we, we really are being very intentional about watching for student growth and to meet their needs. Other items that we're doing listed in our activities on our school improvement plan are, we have an intentional focus on Ekri for our students that are building foundational skills, we are focusing on on teacher clarity, which comes from John Hattie's work. We've attended the annual visible learning conference as an ILT virtually the last two years and really pulled away that teacher clarity is the place for McClure to start. And so it's part of our PD plan, focusing on learning intentions and success criteria for and units of instruction and modules of instruction. We've added an RTI specialist position this year, which is, has an intentional focus on K three and helping to support our K three students and reading foundational skills. And then we also have a heavy focus on GLAD, which stands for Guided Language Acquisition Design Strategies and in supporting kids developing language acquisition. This happens during our core instruction and then also in our tier two instructions, so tier two would be kiddos that need a little bit more support and really focusing on what their needs are. And math is very similar, we, the inquiry cycle meetings and the teacher clarity all happen in math as well. And we've had an intentional focus on number talks, this requires students to be able to explain their math fluency strategies orally. And so other students in their class can hear, it gives the teacher the opportunity to clarify any misconceptions and capitalize on those, those teaching, teachable moments when kids are sharing their strategies. We've also, in addition to our RTI specialist, added a math interventionist for support in that area, and this is running K five. And really been a valuable position, our math interventionist is supporting the implementation of an Imagine Math Program online, and so students took a math benchmark assessment and then she's using that data to plan what they'll focus on in their small groups when they are with her. And then our social emotional learning focus, I feel like we've done a lot of work in this area by developing our attendance care team, this team meets weekly to look at students who are following below the threshold, they, we, we take out students who have been put into quarantine due to COVID and we really focus on our students that just are not attending and connecting with families and working on removing barriers for them. Attendance is included in our data-focused inquiry cycle meetings, that's quarterly, we're looking at our, our attendance data with classroom teachers. Classroom teachers this year have also had an intentional focus on after two absences connecting with the families on a personal level. We've increased our social emotional instructional time to 15 minutes a day, I think I'm almost out of time. Do I have 10 more minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Dr. Darling, I tried to look. And so we had an intentional 15 minutes focus, McClure's always had second steps curriculum and access to that curriculum, but in order to support that curriculum, we added the zones of regulation curriculum this year. And so when I show you a bunch of pictures of what's happening in classrooms, you'll see zones of regulation all over those pictures. And this is really about giving kids the language to know how their body's feeling and, and how to regulate those emotions and what strategies and tools they can use to get back to what we call the green zone. A huge area for McClure also that we took away from our science of school improvement training last year, our empathy interviews with students, so empathy interviews are happening on all different levels, so we've talked to students about attendance and what might be happening with them not coming to school, we've talked to students about who, who in the school do you feel like you could talk to, really focusing on what, every student having one caring adult. And then we'll even move those into ELA and math, so finding a lot of power in student voice with those empathy interviews. Our school improvement plan, I'll touch on that really quickly. And there's a lot in here because it's a very complex document, but just really wanted to focus on we have five goals in our school improvement plan, this goal encompasses to our foundational skills and our target. But then underneath each goal is connected with how the goal aligns to our district strategic plan. And so staff are able to connect and see everything as kind of the stacking cups, how everything fits together. And then under each one of those are the list of our activities. And so for that ELA goal, we have four activities, timeline, who's doing it, how are we measuring it? And what resources and curriculum are we using to measure that? So this is our living, breathing document that we use all of the time to look at our goals and make sure that we are, are sticking to our activities and measuring them. So you'll see even hiring a math interventionist and the support person to provide tier two and three math interventions is on, is a part of our school improvement plan. So again, there's a lot of writing here and I don't want to make anyone seasick by going too fast, but I thought that there's a lot of power in this document in looking at our goals and, and how we're going to grow our students here at McClure. Embedded in this, in our school improvement plan are links to Google Docs that support our activities as well. So just scrolling down, you'll see implementing zones of regulation is one of our activities, daily cell check-in. And then our fifth goal is the staff-focused goal, and so in order to positively impact student learning, we will increase from 87 to 95% and McClure staff being open to new ideas and change. And then this comes from the CEE data that I showed a few slides back where there's a 29% difference in the I versus they gap. So we are trying to decrease that to 10% and we have some goals and ways to do that. One of those is implementing learning walks with our ILT and PBIS members, which will be brand new for McClure and a little bit scary. So we haven't started these yet, we're looking at starting around January. Just trying to build that mindset that it's safe to have people walking through your classroom and we'll be intentionally looking at our, our core practices, so what are we doing in our classrooms to support students before they get to intervention? And the next document that we have created and that every team has worked on here at McClure is they have, and this document is thanks to Kathy Page, she shared this with me. Our teams have created a building goal aligned to our school goals. Or sorry, a grade level goal aligned to our building goal, so you'll, this document shows our building goal at the top. And then each grade level's specific goal that matches our school improvement goal. So for example, our target here in ELA was to focus on analysis within and across text, so what does that look like at a kindergarten level? Well, right here, you'll see kindergarten standards listed out in their goal and their plan for analysis within and across text. At a kindergarten level, it sounds like with prompting and support, identify character settings and major events in the story. And so we've been really intentional about here's what our school-wide goal looks like, how does that apply to me as a grade level teacher? And if we have three goals listed on here down at the bottom, so the next one is math. And then the third one is our attendance goal, and so all of these goals and this document will be checked in with at our inquiry cycle meeting, so just another tool for us to be intentional on living our school-wide goals. Our inquiry cycle meetings, I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of all the work that has went into our inquiry cycles and so that, all right, this is IF-led. And when we meet in our inquiry cycles, this is a third grade example, we're really asking the questions, what were students supposed to learn? What data do we have that shows what they did learn? And how are we going to teach, moving forward for all levels? Or where do we need to plan to revisit for students that didn't make the target? Where do we need to move if we gave a pre-assessment and students already know what we were going to teach? And so we're having a lot of conversation around asking those questions. Sometimes the questions are answered over a couple of meetings, that sometimes we can get to all of them in one meeting, but really focusing on what do we want students to know, how do we know that they learned it, and now what do we do with our data moving forward? So what does this look like here at McClure? So I tried to snap some pictures in classrooms for you to see what our activities in our school improvement plan look like in action. And it was really neat because when I was in classroom, my classrooms taking pictures, I wasn't just getting a snapshot of one thing, there were multiple things in each picture, so I'll start with this big picture right here, you'll see the, a sample. a sample of the Zones of Regulation. And so the idea is to be in the green zone and to teach students when they're in yellow or red or blue. Some strategies for getting back to the green, but also modeling that no matter what zone we're in, it can be a normal feeling because even adults move through the zone. In this third grade classroom, you'll see a learning intention. Right here, the teacher has highlighted vocabulary within that learning intention to really make sure that students understood what their learning intention was. And then down here, she has success criteria. So behind this picture is another one. There were actually three success criteria for students to know how they were going to be successful in meeting this learning intention. This is a first grade classroom. So you'll see at the top of this poster, ECRY. So this is our enhanced core reading instruction. And abbreviated to ECRY, so really working on letter sounds blending to make to make words. And it's all done in a chart. So kids will be sitting on the carpet in front of the teacher. And then this is a would be a whole group lesson. Again, you'll see the Zones of Regulation here. And the pride means because our our McClure expectations are called the Pride Expectations. So they're the Pride Zones. This is a kindergarten classroom. And so really goal focused, this is one of their math goals. I can count to one hundred. But you'll also see these are called letter sound cards. And so these are introduced when students are learning a new letter, name, letter, sound. And in this yellow box will be all the different sounds that the letter can make. And so when teachers are using ECRY, the Enhanced Reading Core Instruction, they will use these cards to introduce sound. And then they also have the picture that goes with them. So those are our literacy key initiatives. With a little bit of cell in there because you see the zones. And then more in math. So these are snapshots of not just math, but I have our RTI interventionist in here. So what you see is this is our math interventionist working with students, and this is a classified support person. They're working in our shared area with targeted small groups, working on very specific skills all right now around place value, which also aligns to our schoolwide goal. This is actually reading instruction over here. The students are working on compound words. These are third graders. So they have the yellow and green cards to break apart compound words, which is another component of ECRY. So the ECRY starts whole group, but then moves to a tier two level where students can receive targeted instruction in small groups. More Zones of Regulation. So this this poster made it back in, but you saw this in our other slide. This one I thought was really powerful. It's in a kindergarten classroom and you can't see. But the magnets here include each student's names, so they get to move their magnet according to what zone they're in. When they come into the classroom and then so you see one student indicated that they were in the red, four indicated they were in the blue. Teacher will then go visit with these kiddos during some independent work time to find out why they're in that zone and brainstorm what they can do to move to the green zone. This specific classroom, even the teachers have magnets, so teachers could model and indicate what zone they were in. This is in our library. So it also encompasses a whole bunch of things happening at McClure. You'll see learning intentions posted by the librarian. Over here are Pride Expectations. Down here is actually the toolbox of expected pride behaviors. So this is just the zone, what zone am I in? But these are the actual tools that students can select from if they're in a zone. So it's really hard to see. But for example, if you're in the blue zone, one strategy that you can use or one tool is to ask for help. The next one is to tell someone. So it's really just training students and staff to recognize where they're, how they're feeling and how they get out. What strategy can they use to move back to the green? And that's a wrap. I think I might have made my time. This is our our new rebranded logo. That's our our Mustang. So questions?
Thank you, Jamie. Are there any questions from board members, questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. On the discipline data, you talked about, I can't remember exactly the data there. You talked about build, oh, the fourteen kids who maybe received a referral or or something like that. You talked about developing interventions for each of those kids. I wondered if you could just share a couple of examples of what those interventions are to help me understand better what what that, how that looks.
Absolutely. I'm gonna let Mrs. Casillas shine a little bit and tell you about some of those interventions. Both of us are really involved, but she has, she needs opportunity to share some of her work.
Thanks, Jamie. Thank you for letting me share this part. This is definitely a passion of mine with all our kiddos. So we have worked extremely hard. We know that with our students being gone for so long and in different environments at home, they have all returned to us in different states of well being. Which is a lot to do with the Zones of Regulation and getting them to understand that these feelings they are having is normal. So some of the interventions that we are going through with them is we have something called a lunch bunch with our MTSS person and with our counselors who, based off of our screener that we have teachers do twice a year. We will, we had a day for just our P B I S team to sit and look at all our students who have screened in with some concerns, and we were able to build groups and different strategic interventions for them. So some of them may have got a lunch bunch where they need to sit and meet friends or talk about, learn specific skills. There is going to be a kindergarten sunshine circle, which will teach them a lot of their social skills. We have students, certain students who need check in and check out. So Jamie and I have a group of those kiddos that come and meet with us in the morning and afternoon. We have one little friend that meets with us five times a day and to keep him roaring and going. And then we have other staff members that have volunteered to also have check in and check outs. And it may be the fact that they have had that student before, they've bonded with that student and know that student. And so they'll use, they'll be there check in or check out. And then we also have high five kids where we just really feel that they need the extra attention and love. So we spread the love around the whole building and show everybody who they are and then so that when staff ask them and know them, they just simply say good morning and recognize their names and ask them how they're doing. And so just giving them a little extra attention. So that's just a few of them. We're getting ready to start any Pride Academy for recess for students who need a little extra support in remembering our Pride Expectations. But those are some of the more positive reactions that we've been having, interactions that we've been having with the kids.
Thank you. Other question around attendance. You've mentioned that there are that four students who missed, I think it was two days or more that a teacher calls the family. Are you able to share some of the reasons that you've heard from families for that, those missed days?
Yeah. And so another component of attendance that's really been helpful is parent square. And I'm able to see all of the reasons that parents are listing that students are missing daily. And so we have everything from illness to a little bit of fear, if there may have been an exposure in a classroom. But some of our barriers really have chronically absent students have been more about either transportation issues or parents working. For our last meeting that we had, we, the parent finally opened up and shared a medical concern and we were able to reassure her that we could even develop something called a 504 for her student to provide accommodation. So we haven't really pinpointed that there's one barrier that our families are facing other than illness and and fear seem to be a big a big part of it.
It's helpful to to hear some of those those reasons, even if there isn't one kind of core reason. I think as a board member, at least, it's helpful to understand all the different reasons that are out there. I don't have any other questions, but just want to thank you, Jamie and Stephanie and and your team there for all the work that you're doing. I love spreadsheets and I love data and I love targeted goals and metrics and all that good stuff. And so it was really neat to see all the work that you've done in putting those plans and 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 project plans together. So thank you for all of that. And look forward to your your outcomes as you move forward through each 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 level of of goal that you've set. I like how you have broken all of those down. So I think, thank you so much for your work and your commitment.
Thank you. And I would love, I wish that you were here and I could show you and walk through all the spreadsheets. It would have, it would have been really fun because we too love that.
And I love the Zones of Regulation. I feel like we could use that as as adults in in the workplace. I'm gonna find a resource and download it and put it in my office. It's, I really like that that resource. And it's so neat that we're normalizing identifying how we're feeling and developing strategies to to get out of a red zone or a yellow zone into the green zone. You know, it's 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 back in the day, that really wasn't hot. And so it's neat that that we're seeing that more and more normalized and it's okay to talk about, you know, your your mental health essentially. So it's neat to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Garcia. Norm, do you have any comments or questions for Jamie or Stephanie?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment you on on the amount of detail you're paying attention to and really digging deep into data. And I also was, I was intrigued with the Zones of Regulation. And I had a question around that is, are you teaching that to your parents? So that you have a common language when you talk with them, or are the kids teaching it to their parents? Sometimes kids will go home and teach it to their parents, but that's a great kind of way to just categorize things and help kids look at their own behavior and improve it. So, yeah.
Yes, Norm, we are, we are working on teaching it to our parents. I know kids are going home and talking to their parents about it. My own daughter has come home and said a couple of things, and I know how it's working in her classroom. And parents have mentioned to us, but one opportunity that we were really able to give to support a family is one of the kiddos who was in our referral data. And he had had an extremely explosive day with both Mrs. Casillas and myself. And during our reengagement meeting, I gave mom one of the posters and she was thrilled. And we had already talked through some of the language with her, but she was able to take the resource and she said, I'm hanging this in his bedroom and we're gonna use it.
Great, great. Yeah. And I was also impressed that you mentioned something early on when you were talking about one of the the posters up in the classroom and stuff, but you were, even in math, you mentioned that you had things like keywords. And I'm a huge advocate of everything we teach, K twelve, we all teachers need to be teaching vocabulary, especially with English language learners and and learners with disabilities, that vocabulary is a key thing in every subject area. And I just think that's a sneak that you emphasize, you know, kids, kids don't know what you're talking about if they don't have the vocabulary and they might sit there and nod. But if they don't know what you're saying, then then we're not getting through to them. So I'm just impressed that that popped up in the conversation that you're teaching vocabulary strategically too.
Thank you, Norm. Thank you, Stephanie and Jamie. This was a very informative and packed presentation. I'm sorry that Don and Raymond are not here to see it because they are, they both very much appreciate the the data piece of our work. And it's, it's, it was I was pleased to see that that you are so determined and intentional about your setting your school goals, reporting on your school goals, monitoring your school goals, and then reassessing and changing if you need to. I firmly believe that if if you're not doing that circle, that you're just gonna repeat whatever it was you've been through already. And clearly you are more than, more than ready to take this on and to do what needs to be done to make sure that the McClure students are succeeding. I did have just a couple other appreciations. One is building within staff the awareness that what a kindergarten teacher does really applies to what a high school senior accomplishes. And, you know, to say that our kindergartners are graduating in two thousand thirty four makes me just feel so old. You have no idea. But to to make that a reality for your kindergarten teachers, that whatever it is that they do with their students gets built on in first grade, in second grade, in third grade. Because I think too often there's a disconnect between you know, what teachers in the upper grades are are responsible for and what teachers in the lower grades are responsible for. And I appreciate that you're so intentional on making sure that that those lower grade teachers know that whatever it is that they do is going to have an impact at some point in that student's future. And the other thing that I really appreciated was your establishing the goal that after two absences, the teacher contacts the parents. So often, and I can speak to this as as a former parent in the school district, so often parents are not contacted by school staff unless there's a problem. And as soon as there's a problem, then, oh, we're all over that. But to be able to get in before the problem becomes unmanageable and to establish that relationship with parents is so beneficial to the the relationship that you have to have because you are both adults in this child's life. And I so appreciate the fact that you've, that you've made that commitment. So thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. And if if we have board members that are interested in digging a little deeper into the data, perhaps we could get just the list of links so that we could dig into that data. And I'm sure that as time allows or as life allows, you you'll see some of us in your buildings. So I very much appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we would be honored to have anyone in our building. We would get to show off a little bit. And the documents are very complex and include hours and hours and hours and hours of work. And so if you wanted to dig in, we would willingly and gladly share those documents.
Yeah, some of us, some of us data geeks, we just live for those hours and hours and hours of digging into data. Um, Kathy Page, do you have anything to add before I turn it back to Superintendent Green?
Well, first of all, I just want to say, Jamie and Stephanie, that was outstanding. You will notice that they very much are a data informed, data driven school and a joy to work with. I would would like to add about Jamie, I don't know that she really highlighted it, but she's also a state trainer, state certified trainer for Danielson Framework for our teachers. And so we have this leader in the school that brings so much to the table. And then also a GLAD trainer, correct, Jamie? See, you need to brag a little bit about everything that you have. And so we're really lucky to have her. We're really lucky to have Stephanie with her experience and and they are a true joy to work with and lucky staff, lucky students. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Green, do you want to close this out?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Jamie. It is phenomenal to see the data that was shared and that we are being directed by our strategic plan to see the way that that aligns the work for Jamie. to see the way that that aligns the work for Jamie and for all of McClure under her leadership. I'm very proud of her. She is, she took a position that she was not sure about a few years ago and has really made that her own and is making a difference to a community in Yakima that sorely needs her leadership and that of Stephanie as well. So we're thanking both of them. And of course, it's a community effort, so we know that that is, in large part, their success is because of the faculty, the staff that is there working with them on a daily basis. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Kathy. And a big thank you as well to our Teaching and Learning Department for supporting McClure and all of the other departments that certainly make, make things happen around student achievement. Because we know that we're all players in that, but we're proud of the presentation that she, Jamie, you gave today and Stephanie as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Jamie and Stephanie, you are more than welcome to stay. We have other things that we need to attend to today. But we completely understand if you have other things that are pulling at you and demanding your attention. So we will not be offended if you happen to have to log off. So thanks so much for joining us. I can't wait until we are able to meet in person again.
Absolutely. Thank you to everyone who was able to be here and listen. We're just so excited to see growth and report on those successes.
And please thank your staff for us, for everything that they're doing. We know that this has not been the easiest of years for the last year and a half, two years. We know how hard everyone is working, especially our principal teams. We very much appreciate all of the work that you're doing. It hasn't been easy. It's been probably one and a half times more... One and a half times more difficult than any other years that we've had. But you guys are pulling it out and we have no words to tell you how much we appreciate everything that you're doing. And please share that with your staff as well. Okay, let's see, what's next? Next on our agenda are items of board interest, reports from members of the board. Do we have any board members who wish to report on anything to share with the rest of the board?
I have something brief to share, Martha. Last week, I participated in a student-led forum for school board candidates. And I just want to share that the questions that the students asked were so thoughtful and certainly on topic with what we're dealing with. And so one of the things that I walked away with is that so many of our students, while they are tired of COVID and all of the stuff they have to do in terms of wearing masks and social distancing, they also know that that's really important and that they want us to take care of them and to keep them safe. So that was really validated to me, the cautious approach that we've taken as a board and as a district to ensure that our kids are as safe as they can be. So it was neat to hear the students verbalize that and acknowledge that although they're tired and sick of it, they also know it's the right thing to do and they appreciate our efforts. So that was nice to hear that validation.
It's nice that they were able to share that with you. I think that too often adults tend to force off onto our students what their feelings are about things without realizing that these students actually do have voices and they can use them and they know, they know what they're talking about when they talk. So thank you for sharing that. Anything else, Norm? Do you have anything?
Oh, I just liked, I was at a social event yesterday and with a lot of people of the community. And I ran into one of our elementary music teachers. And the teacher just had high praise for Dr. Darling and how supportive he's been and what this person's been trying to do in their program. And I just thought I'd pass that on. It's nice to be out in public and have somebody give us a compliment. So pass that on to Mr. Darling. This person feels very supported in our district.
Very nice. That's good to hear. We do have a couple of things. Back on our September 27th board meeting, Raymond brought up that we had not made any edits to our 1,003.9 board policy process for addressing board member violations. And we set today as the deadline for any board member to submit samples or examples of those types of policies that they have run across or that they're aware of. I have not received anything from anybody regarding this. And I was talking with someone last week about how, how they handle board-generated requests for board members to do something, to take an action on something. And what they shared was a tool that they've developed and incorporated into their protocols that the action or request would be entered into like an Excel sheet. And there would be a 30-day clock on this particular action or any particular action. And if it has not been addressed or some kind of resolution made to that request, at the end of the 30 days, it falls off the table. And it's up to somebody to bring it up and put it back on the table if they want. What was shared with me was that that's a way that board members can hold other board members accountable for things that they've agreed to do as well as setting deadlines for things, because we all know that we work better when we have deadlines. And that if it's important to a board member, that deadline is going to be what drives that board member to complete the requested action. And I'm wondering how you all would feel, how the board members would feel about initiating that kind of a protocol for things that we have bubbling around on our table.
I really like that approach. It's like sometimes we have ideas that we want to move forward and then we, you know, don't because we get busy. So I like the idea of having a formal process in place that's clear. We have 30 days to do something with it. And if it doesn't happen, it's exactly what you said, I think would be a really good idea and help us move things forward that we really care about. And, you know, if it's something that we're less excited about, then maybe we have that opportunity to provide input or not provide input. So I like that approach.
That sounds reasonable to me. I'm fine with that.
So would you be okay if I took a whack at looking where that might go in our protocols?
Sure.
Okay. All right, I will tackle that. And in all likelihood, you will get it before 30 days is up. Last time we met, Raymond mentioned that National School Board Association registration window is open. It is going to be held April 2nd to 4th, 2022, in San Diego. And at this point, it's in person. I don't know if things will change, but at this point, it's in person. And I wondered if either of you two are interested in attending.
I might be if it's, you know, I have in mind, I have in mind that I really want to watch our spending. And I'm not interested in going if there are other people that it's a huge priority for them. I think it's, it would be a great learning opportunity and a nice connection for me. I haven't been to any national-level conferences since I've been on the board. So I would be open to that, but again, I'm also wouldn't be sorely disappointed if it didn't come to pass. But I suppose we need to make a decision pretty soon.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the early registration window closes. I expect it may be around the first of the year, but I don't know that for sure. But if you want, you could go on to the nsba.org website and see what they've got listed on there for, for any workshops that, I don't know what they, what they have on there as far as their conference agenda goes yet.
Sure. No, I'll take, I'll take a look and see what's on the agenda and see if it's related to anything that we're doing here. I don't want to go just to go, but if it's, there are things that are really pertinent to what we're trying to accomplish here, I would, that would be worthwhile, I think.
Yeah, Barb posted in the chat that December 15th is the early registration deadline.
Okay, okay.
So... So we'll need to, we'll need to make some decisions before then. It is a worthwhile conference. And the venue in San Diego is lovely. So if it's, if it's in, it's the beginning of April. So I don't know how much you're going to be affected by spring break, people in San Diego at that time. But it is, it is, I think it's a worthwhile conference. April 1 to 4. Okay, thank you. So I know Raymond is interested in going. Depending on the outcome of the elections, there may be some opportunities for, for a new board member to attend as well. So, but that shouldn't stop you, Norm, from putting your name in that you'd like to go. Because we all have an, we all have a responsibility to, you know, keep our professional development current. And with the, with the level of attendance at these national events, you really do get a broader range of exposure to a lot of things. So, and then there's one other thing on here. Oh, legislative event with our legislators. In the past, we have either done a breakfast or a dinner, depending on their availability. And we've done it in person. Last year, we did it virtually because of the year that we were in. My question to you is, would you prefer that, when Barb starts reaching out to our legislators in the 14th or 15th district, they let us know whether they would prefer virtual or in-person? Or do we just make the decision and say that that's what it's going to be?
I'm comfortable with either, so I would leave it up to them, their preference.
Okay.
Assuming they're vaccinated.
Yes. There was an article in today's Tri-City Herald that at least two of the legislators that cover that area are not, in the House, are not going to be able to be in person because they've not gotten vaccinated yet. And the State House has made a rule that you can't be in person in the State House of Representatives if you're not vaccinated. So... Anyway, Graciela, do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference. I think whatever this schedule allows, we can find.
Okay, do you have a preference for breakfast or dinner?
I don't have a preference.
Norm?
No, no preference there. I'm up with either.
Okay. All right, well, we'll turn Barb loose on connecting with the four representatives and two senators that cover the school district and see what we can, see what we can do to organize a meeting for them, with them, and talk about legislative goals that the district has and that our board has. Okay. Graciela, you pop something into the chat. You want to talk about that?
I posted a question during the presentation.
Oh, okay. With, that got taken care of then? Okay. Is there anything else that the board would like to bring to the attention of other board members? Okay. So we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green?
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. A reminder that October's character word is determined, having reached a decision firmly resolved, or in Spanish, decidido, haber tomado una decisión firmemente resuelto. The trait is resilient learner and the characteristic, la característica, aprendiz, aprendiz resiliente. Thank you. I think that's the last time you're going to be hearing this word for this month. So we're off to a new word here in another week or so. I will now turn over in absence of Stacy Locke, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations. We do have Jewel Brumley filling in. Thank you, Jewel. And she will continue with the report on YSD statistics and Yakima County statistics. Jewel?
Thank you, Dr. Green. And so our dashboard, we administered 1,208 tests with 64 positives, so a positivity rate of 5.30%, which is down from, from last week. Our total students' quarantine is also down to 5.4% of the total district, 59% in elementary, 22 in middle school, and 18 in high school. For percentages. Positive, confirmed positive tests by students and staff for the weeks of the 7th through the 21st. You'll see the students are in blue and the staff are in yellow and then the campuses are down below. And then students' quarantine, again, through those dates, at any time during those dates, they were quarantined for any number of days, depends on what their status is for vaccination with the older students. But by campus, these are a percentage of students that are... that are in quarantine right now. And then the bar is actually the total number. So if you see like at Davis and Eisenhower, there's 70 and 71 students quarantined, but that's only 3.4% at Davis and 5.3% at Eisenhower. So their bars are larger, but their percentage is smaller because they're larger schools, so. And then our changes that we had up until the end of last week, decrease in all areas, which is really nice, decrease 35% in student positives, 62% in staff positives, and a decrease in student quarantine numbers by 32%. So that's really a nice change. Any questions on that?
It's always good to see those kinds of numbers go down. Any questions from board members? I just have one, and that's the testing numbers. Is there, what's the date range for those tests? Is it just last week? Do you know? We go back and look.
I have that on there. It's actually, it's the data.
I have that on there. It's actually, it's the data shown for the last 14 days, October 7th through October 21st.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jewel. Great presentation. I'm sure Stacy appreciates you standing in for her today.
Yeah, I worked with Jessica to change the screens a little bit. And then the county data, daily cases. We had a little spike last, at the end of last week, 149 cases and then 122 cases. I don't have daily cases through the weekend. I have, the weekend numbers were 216, but that's over three days. So I have to break those up before I can put those on there. Our rate, our rate actually now is at 520 as of today. 524 was as of Friday. I don't have a seven day rate because again, I have to break up the 216 into Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday starts the new week, so I will update that. When I get them broken up, the county hasn't posted them broken up yet. Vaccinated versus unvaccinated cases, this is up to date as of today. So there's a high percentage. It's actually 82% unvaccinated cases versus vaccinated cases. And then our zip code data continues to go down. It did go up in one, one area, 98903, but the others either stayed the same or went down last week, which was nice. Hospitalizations have taken a little bit of an uptick. On Friday, we had 44 people hospitalized, and today we have 39. So it went down a little today over the weekend, but we were down in the 30s early at the beginning of the month. So we're still pretty high on hospitalizations. Hospitalizations, vaccinated versus unvaccinated in October, 17 vaccinated people were hospitalized versus 77 unvaccinated people. And then our percent hospitalization by age, we actually do have one and one. They weren't hospitalized here, but they were counted as here. So in our 0 to 11 and 12 to 19, so that's two student age people that were hospitalized. And then our rates just kind of keep going up. We do have more in the older age brackets now, though. And then school age cases in the county, 113 new versus 26 staff new. That's still down from where it was, but hasn't gone down a lot. The trend, again, it's again down, downward trend, especially in the 912. But in the elementary, we had a little bit of a spike up in the county, not in our district. And then initiating the vaccine of all the population. In 256,000 people in Yakima County, 56% started the vaccines. And then 12 and up were at 70% have started the vaccines. And fully vaccinated, we still haven't hit the 50% yet for our total population. We're at 49.9, so I, we go up about every two days, we go up about 2%, 2 tenths of a percent. So we should hit over 50% this week. And then fully vaccinated, 12 and up, we have 62.3%. So the, I extended out the calculations of where we're going to be in to 1121, which is right before Thanksgiving. And we took a little bit of an upturn last week, and we're probably going to maintain that upturn this week. But then I have it going down, but then creeping back up as it gets towards the holidays and the weather gets really bad, people stay inside more, and that, that tends to bring those cases up a little bit more. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Jewel?
Norm, I do have just extra data for you. I didn't have it on a slide, but they put it out today in the new report that since, since April 1st, the first reported vaccinated breakthrough death in Yakima County, we've had 28 deaths of people that are fully vaccinated and 125 deaths of people that are unvaccinated. So 18% versus 82% of unvaccinated of our deaths since April till, till today.
Thanks. That's a nice, nice additional data. I would.
I can add that slide next time.
Well, thanks.
Thank you, Jewel. I'm wondering if when we get to the point where the age 5 through 11 students are getting vaccinated, will we report that as well?
Once that starts, I'm sure that the county is going to put out the vaccination rates. Because they do it from 12 and up now, I'm sure they'll go down to 5 and up and give us rates that way. But that won't start for another week or so, and then, you know, it'll be really small numbers for a little bit till it catches on.
So you think they'll do 5 and up as opposed to 5 to 11 and 12 and up?
Oh, that's a good question. I know they'll report it. I'm not sure how they will report it.
Yeah, my sense is if they do 5 and up, it's going to, it's going to make the, the total percentages of vaccinated students really wobble a bit. Because there's so many elementary kids, but I guess we could probably suggest to them that they break it out, but maybe that, maybe they won't. Who knows? Anyway, thank you, Jewel. Great presentation as always. Very informative, and it keeps, keeps us in the know about all things COVID in the Yakima School District and in our county. So thank you so much for taking on this extra bit of data diving that you do for us every week.
You're welcome, President Rice and school board. I just like it. It's fun.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, I have one more announcement, more for the people that are watching at home or online. But WASDA did announce that there are a list of boards of distinction this year, and they're recognizing 34 school boards as boards of distinction during this critical time. So the statement goes that "In the third year of shifting instructional models and continued health and safety challenges, this year's Board of Distinction application asked school directors to illustrate how their actions exemplified visionary leadership and help the school district close opportunity gaps." The board themselves did not put in for this. This was behind the scenes, unbeknownst to you as directors. So we worked on this internally, and we're proud that the state is recognizing you as one of 34 and one of 14 at the 9,000 FTE level and above. So over 9,000 students and above, there are 14 that were recognized. You may know, WASDA Director of Leadership Development, Tricia Lubach. She stated, "Despite historical challenges this year, school boards displayed tremendous leadership in bringing students back to in-person learning safely and creatively. And given the obstacles that districts have had to face, I think being able to recognize this board and so many boards this year is a testament to the dedication and professionalism of our school directors. The boards that are being honored developed unique approaches that reflected the needs of their students and families and relied on careful analysis of data that indicated those needs." And again, 14 are being recognized in the large school category. So you are now in the running for School Board of the Year, and your chances are significantly greater than they were a week ago. So that's good news. I do, just again, want to draw the attention that, yeah, celebrate, yes. It's especially sweet to be recognized during this time when you know that every, every decision is second guessed multiple times. We've seen a polarization of ideas politically and in the community. And at a time where really there was a, whatever decision was made was wrong in somebody's eyes, and it's always that way. But it was more so an augmented, and has been over the last two and a half years. So thank you for your service. I'm, I'm extremely blessed to work under your leadership, and I know that you have the, the, the true heart for this work and making sure that our students and our community is supported. And, and of course, that zero paycheck that you pull in every week adds, adds to that as well. So for those that are also observing, it truly is a labor of love, and to be recognized at the state level is no small feat. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Green. He was right. They, he and members of his staff submitted the application on our behalf, unbeknownst to us, and it was quite a surprise when we got that notice last week. Just so that the community is aware, there are three different size categories, school district size categories for these awards, small, medium, and large. We fall into the large category because we have so many students. But there are boards of distinction in each category. And then at the State School Directors Annual Conference in November, it's the weekend before Thanksgiving, they will be announcing the Boards of the Year in each of those three categories. So we'll see how that goes, but it is, it is an honor to be recognized as a Board of Distinction. The, the criteria is weighed against the board standards that State School Directors Association has developed that identifies those standards by which boards should judge themselves and work. So so we'll see, we'll see how that goes. We'll let you know in November what comes of that. Okay, um, next on our agenda is the pre-approval discussion for monitoring reports for policy 1,003.1 governing style. We received, we received the monitoring, we discussed the monitoring report for this particular policy. And a survey went out earlier this month, and the response came back from all five board members that the board was either partially or fully compliant with all elements of the policy. And there was one comment. I don't know if the board member that made that comment is here or not, or if he or she is here wishes to speak to that before we go into a discussion.
Yeah, I, I will speak to that. I'm the one that made that comment. And I wish I'd had a, we had a category that said mostly compliant rather than partially compliant. But that's a direct reference to an executive session we had a month, a month and a half ago that I felt did not indicate a future focus and also was, and I can't say anymore about that because naturally it was executive session. But I was disappointed too that following that executive session, comments were made back in the board meeting that kind of left folks wondering what's going on. And I thought that was inappropriate to have comments made about the executive session in the, in the board meeting. And I, I didn't think that was really good practice to do that. So that said, that being said, I think we're mostly in compliance, but that, but the two areas that did not indicate a, an outward focus, and it did not indicate a student-directed focus. It was kind of more relitigating past concerns that occurred even before I was on the board. So again, that was my response. I, I, again, I, I really feel that that was not totally appropriate for that to occur the way it did. But that said, I think we can move on from there. And, and I'd be happy to address that if we need to address that again in a future executive session.
All right. Thank you, Norm. We have two other, sorry, I've got a big dog here that's in my business. We've got two other reports that we are, that are on our agenda today. But I think what I'd like to do, because this is in its own little category, I would, I would, I would accept, I would accept a motion to approve the monitoring report for 1,003.1 governing style.
So moved.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Graciela. Is there any other discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vianueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Hi.
Motion passes 3 to 0.
Thank you. We also have two policies where we are doing a pre-approval for the rating reports that came in for those two policies. 1,000.4.0 Global Governance Management Connection. That was viewed earlier this month. A survey was sent out, and all five board members responded, and all five agreed that the board is compliant with all elements of this policy as well. And so there were no comments, and I'm wondering if there are any comments at this time from board members. Okay. And Barb and I had a conversation about 4.1 earlier today. Barb, do you want to fill the board in on, on what you did and what you found out about?
Absolutely. We had, I kept getting emails saying that the board members were approving and submitting the survey, and then it wouldn't populate on Survey Monkey itself. So I reached out to customer service on Survey Monkey, and they confirmed today that there was a glitch behind the scenes. And so that's why I had to resend them, and that's why today you got, you received a second one on that. We haven't received all of the answers back, so it's not on today's meeting. I bumped it to next week.
I'd like to add a comment on that particular one, because I did respond to that when it went out today. And there's a question in there that there is not a response, an appropriate response to the question, because it asks about semi-annual review or not enough. And what we, that's an item we review annually. And the option in there is, there's not an option in there to say annually is sufficient. So I think we need to go back and look at that question and restructure that interview. And I made a comment there on that when you looked at it, because there, there's not a way to answer that one appropriately.
Let's take a look at it. We might be seeing this the third time then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
We'll, we'll move that particular agenda item for 4.1 to probably next week, right, Barb? So that we, so that we actually have all people responding to it, the same one at the same time. So having said that, I would, I would accept a motion. would accept a motion for approval of the board rating reports for one thousand point four point O, Global Governance and Management Connection. Moved by Norm, seconded by Graciela, is there any discussion? Okay, so watch your email for another go-around at four point one, um, we'll see how that goes.
Would you like me to take roll?
I'm sorry?
Would you like?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Ms. Vianueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, thanks. Um, we've reached the end of our regular agenda, Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have a need for executive sessions today.
Okay, is there anything else to go to the order from board members or staff? Okay, seeing none, um, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much for standing in there with us today, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your week. Take care.
Thank you.